Everybody, the I'm Jason Renderly. Uh, leading the study tonight here in uh James uh five eleven through twenty. The bonus reading this week was Proverbs seven through nine. Don't know if anybody. Read that dug into it, whatever, but um. Yeah, so. Kind of a interesting little uh. Passage, I mean, it's a. A short few verses here, you know, there's only let only what nine ver- nine verses, ten verses and. There's a lot to be to be dug out of it, right? So. Um, if we kind of go into what questions Will had thrown out in the in the study guide. What? Was there any any other related um passages that jumped out at anybody? Along that uh those lines of, you know, may does your yes mean yes, or the faith-filled prayer or um. Restoration of. Other other people in your life or whatever? Anyone, anyone?
I'm not very good at those questions. That's been my most challenging part of this Bible study is to try to find. Scriptures. I've almost come to will that and how to do that as matter of fact, but. I think I know how to do it, but I struggle with that. So I apologize. I don't have any other thing to offer on that.
Oh, no worries. I think that if you. I don't get to a spot where it's like just take the first one. Yes, means yes. I mean, if you. Think about any character where like they were challenged with a. Like a big. Obedience, um, you know, moment of obedience, like their yes means yes, like you could just say. Abraham is probably someone that probably modeled that pretty well, you know, he's like sacrifice your son and he's like. Okay, I'll do it. And it's like, what? And so like, right there is like a. One connection. So you know, it doesn't, sometimes those don't have to be as. You know, in-depth or really parallel or like, you know, go right along with. Um, the exact verse or whatever passage we're reading. But sometimes it can be a little bit more broad too and still kind of think that way. So that might hopefully that. As you get into Bible studies in the future too, uh, that hopefully that could help in some ways of like you can even. Take it a little bit more broad and um still find those connections throughout different passages.
Yeah.
And then, yeah, and I think it will as I get to learn more, I mean. Like, just like you said, maybe your yes means yes, like we talked about Noah, maybe he could be one that, you know, Pastor Tim talked about on Sunday also.
Yeah, for sure, for sure. Any anytime you anytime you find someone in 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 scripture that um. You know, that the that they've made a made a promise to do something or. Made an agreement with God to, you know, or that they followed God's direction or whatever. And and actually followed through with it, right? Because we are are yeah, and that that's kind of what we get into. One one little note that I that I made off of off of this is is um sincerity is key. Don't promise anything that you can't deliver on. Right?
One thing I was thinking of was the previous passages in James two that, you know, the taming of the tongue. The other scriptures in the Bible about, you know, the power of the tongue, the power of the words. You know, your yes be yes, not making agreements, um, like you just said that you can't keep, but also the uh. You know, the truth side of it too, not. You know, taming the tongue and and telling the truth and not embellishing or. Changing for your. Glory or whatever, you know, that side of it as well, I was thinking of.
Yeah, then, you know, kind of going off. Yeah, that 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 is that as well, Nate. Um, and then, you know, and. And to kind of kind of play off of that camera, the, you know. Yeah, I don't I don't know if you've got a got a study Bible or not, but a lot of times your study bibles will have. Some notes in there that you can that you can, you know, kind of. Kind of pull off, pull off and go go explore some of those, some of those things like that. Um, another one that just came to my mind was um, just like when um. Jesus told Peter that. He he was gonna deny him and Peter said, no, I won't. And then all of a sudden here, a few verses later, Peter has. Denied Jesus three times, just like Jesus said he would, even though even though Peter denied it. So. Yeah, there was a. There was a couple that I that I had. Honestly, honestly, they they were actually some notes that were in in one of my study bibles. Which one of them was Matthew five thirty-four? In in that regard, I don't, I think I marked it. Maybe I did. I thought I marked it. Maybe I didn't. Does anybody else have that handy?
To Matthew five thirty-four?
Uh, yeah, five thirty-four through thirty-seven.
Yeah, I got it right here. So I'm in NIV. Says thirty-four through thirty-seven?
Yeah.
But I tell you, do not swear an oath at all, either by heaven. For it is God's throne, or by earth, for it is his footstool, or by Jerusalem, for it is the city of the great king. And do not swear by your head, for you cannot make heaven, or you cannot make even one hair white or black. All you need to say is simply yes or no. Anything beyond this comes from the evil one.
Yeah, so I mean, uh, real really, I think that just kind of gives a little bit more detail. To what's what's here in in. In James five twelve. It just kind of gives a little more emphasis to that.
I also had on um Matthew five thirty-six, that's pretty cool.
Sweet.
I wonder if that was one of those things that like. Grow, I don't know, just I continually just picture James growing up with Jesus. So I'm always like, I wonder if. Somehow like that's like, I don't know. Something they kind of grew up with too, like Mary is like, don't swear. Jesus is like, yeah, you're right, mom. Threw it in here, I don't know.
Yeah. I mean, the definitely definitely could be it's. It's it's funny, that was one of that was one of the things that we actually talked about in our men's groups this morning was the. Like how there's there is some kind of gray areas there that we just, we just don't know. The fine details of what really went down, you know, we we can speculate, but. You know, how how some of those conversations actually went down and that. And the conversations that happened in the background that. That we just, we just don't know.
Do you think the gray areas in scripture, because they're all over? Do you think gray areas in scripture are on purpose? So all scriptures inspired by God, right? So if all in scriptures inspired. And there's gray area left in there. Why?
Cause you to study. To not lose interest. To keep you involved in it.
I think there's actually an element of that 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 very well could be. Those those gray areas are what allow. In some ways, I think. Those gray areas in some way allow. Allow room for the scripture to be living and breathing like it is.
I think you're, yeah, you're both right on. At least room for relationship.
Yeah.
There's no gray area, it'd be a textbook. Some level, right?
Yeah, for sure.
Kinda.
For sure. Um, and another one that I just found in a different study Bible. Um, was Hebrews six thirteen and in the N L T. It says, for example, there was God's promise to Abraham, since there was no one greater to swear by God took an oath in his own name. Saying, so I will certainly bless you and I will multiply your descendants beyond number. Then Abraham waited patiently and he received what God had promised. I guess we can go on from there into the the end of the Hall of Faith. Because. Abraham didn't necessarily fully see the results of that promise in his lifetime. I don't know that we've seen the full the fullness of that promise today.
One thing I was thinking of, Jason, when you brought up the whole um Jesus and Peter. Interaction around the um denying and that whole thing, you know, the other side of that. Is Jesus as the example of his word being yes be yes and is no be no um. You know, and the power that he used in in the words and um. I don't know, I was I was thinking about that and like you just said, the whole part about God making that covenant with Abraham. Yeah, the other the other side of that is cool too, that that example of Jesus. Um, we talked about it this morning too, you know, like at the end of twenty, like what what would you like me to do for you? And they're like, we want to see, you know, and 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 he did it. Um, so he used that. That uh as a great example for us too.
Yeah, for sure. For sure. So. So. One of one of the things like why? Again, back to back to the 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 original outline study questions. Um, James says above all in verse twelve, why is it so important not to swear?
I thought it was so people would believe you because um. You avoid lies and um half truths. That previously have caused you to swear. And if you continue to do that and people won't believe you, so you don't swear all the time, so people will believe leave you. Part of something else I read.
That that kind of leads into the that leads right into the next question that I was gonna ask, so.
Oh, sorry.
No, no, that no, that that's totally fine, but and and that was that was my my next question was what what happens if we break our word? Which, right there, you just covered it, you know, if we if we break our word, people, people can't trust us, right? And so. Following on to following out of that, what impact does that have on? On others' perception of us? And of Christ and the church?
Yeah, I think that the. The doing what you say you're gonna do when you say you're gonna do it, you know, and that that part of it and the um. You know, being trustworthy, being all those, all those things and honest and and um. Careful with your words that all. Sets you up, you know, like we were talking about earlier, Jason, you and I like above reproach, you know, that sets you up in that position. Um, as an example, and I think that. That has a. Key. Is a key player in the. Position to have a relationship that's worthy to be able to to share Christ and do do life with somebody enough to. To make a difference in the kingdom.
Yeah, yeah, you know, and then you 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 using that words of being above reproach. I'm drawing a blank on off the top of my head on where it's at, but the. It's in Timothy, oh, I believe, um, where Paul's telling Timothy, you know, the 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 guidance and rules for someone that. Desires to be a leader in the church. You know, that they're they're supposed to live above reproach. Where? You know? So, yeah, so like, you know, what does? What what does just digging a little farther into that, like what does? If we're if we're claiming to be Christians, you know, Christian, the. Which the original term Christian was actually meant as a derogatory term. And so it's interesting that that's the case. But if we're if we're not living. As true. Examples of Christ. What does that do to Christ's reputation?
It's bad. Things have looked bad. That's what a lot of people look at. That's why a lot of people don't believe in God because of those kinds of things. You know, they don't believe in it.
Yeah, for sure. Well, Will had a question here. Does swearing have an impact privately as well as publicly?
Yes. Absolutely.
And. What if?
Don't hit your thumb with a hammer.
Different kind of swearing, Dean, different kind of swearing. Um, that's a, that's an interesting perspective there, Will, too, like not keeping a promise that you've made to yourself. That's.
Yeah, what kind of impact you guys think that can have on someone where you're, I mean, yourself, maybe you. Are thinking of examples. I know I I can think of them pretty quickly. But like, yeah, what kind of impact does that have? Internally, if you don't keep promises to yourself?
A lot of those are coming up here, right? New Year's resolutions.
I I just don't do them.
Then you can't let yourself down.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, for sure. I mean.
Resolution is to not have a New Year's resolution.
Right? And I I I think I think that adage of trying to be one percent better every day. You know, if I if I'm one percent better in some area than I than I was yesterday, that's positive growth. What what is that? Well, measurable, measurable.
Practical, obtainable, measurable.
Yeah, there we go. Yeah.
Specific, practical, measurable, attainable spam, yeah.
Yeah. I I I never can remember that one. Okay, it's in my head, but I can't remember the actual acronym. So. So that that's something that I that I that I was just thinking of, you know, that off of that, not keeping a promise to yourself. What does that do in relation to? And again, I'm drawing a blank on this specific passage, but. There's passage that says that we will will be will be judged by Christ and it. At the judgment seat of Christ will be judged on every idle word we speak. God kind of downloaded something to me here a couple of years ago that that. That even goes to because he knows our heart, right? He knows that he knows our heart, he knows every thought that we have, so. That that even goes into our internal dialogue. Our thought life and. Are we being positive? Are we being negative? Are we? You know, what what does that look like? And so. Going down that path just a little bit, what does? What does that do to our inner dialogue that affects? How uh how we live out? Our life and interactions with others.
I think it's important because um. If I. Make a promise to myself, God knows what it is, and if I fail in that, I have conviction. I know for myself when I've um. Made a pact with myself that I want this and this to happen and it doesn't. I get conviction almost immediately.
So is that always conviction or is that guilt? Because conviction comes from the Holy Spirit and guilt comes from the devil.
Nope, I think I I feel maybe you get some guilt too, but I feel like. Absolutely conviction because the Holy Spirit lives in me and whatever I'm trying to do, it's because I want. To please God, and if I fail in something that I'm convicted in. Then. That conviction comes in that I didn't, I let myself down, but I let him down. Does that make sense?
Yeah, then what what kind of came into my head there is is that may fault it, I'm not saying it does. But it may fall into um that category of a sin of omission. Rather than necessarily a sin of commission. You know, where we you you know the right thing to do, but you don't do the right thing and so so therefore. That is potentially uh potentially sin, doesn't it?
And I'm not speaking necessarily about sin things. The Lord lays something, I feel like he's laid something or someone on my heart. And it's there and it's there and then I don't follow through. I feel I feel that, you know, and and sometimes there'll be a reminder that I dropped the ball or I didn't follow through. Or, you know, it's just like if someone has something going on and I say, I'm gonna pray for you, I'm gonna pray for you. Because I gave my word. And it's it's important to follow through.
Right? Yeah, and that 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 goes directly back to the mayor, yes be yes, and your no be no.
Do you guys think there's a healthy? Or I guess, are there healthy promises that you can make to yourself and unhealthy ones? Or is it just like a blanket? Probably shouldn't prom- promise stuff and promise, I think. Lightens it up a little. We're talking about a vow. And so vows are more absolute than. I I feel like, I don't know if our culture and like reality television have really softened what a promise means. But like, it's a vow, right? And so. Do you think that there's healthy promises we can make to ourselves opposed to unhealthy ones? What are your thoughts?
I think there's opportunity for. For both of those. One thing that was coming to my mind while we were talking about this is with the whole like internal. Vow um and also the yes be yes, no be no is the is the fruit of self-control. You know, like some of that is um. An example of self-control or lack thereof um in your life as far as. The way that you can throw or I can throw around vows, you know, and promises as a little bit lesser. Hard version, but still the same kind of vow, you know, and and that self-control can. If that fruit of self-control is being produced in my life, then and then I have a. Less tendencies to to do that.
Um, all of this is making me think of of being slow to speak. And um slow to anger. And that, you know, our words have power when we're praying, so. Our words have power when we speak in general. Yeah, I've been like deep in thought and couldn't figure out how to get my words out.
Well, we kind of kind of touched on prayer a bit there um. And, you know, like Debbie, like you were saying, you know, i- if I if I tell you I'm gonna pray for you, I'm gonna pray for you, right? And so um that kind of leads leads into, you know. Have any of you prayed for someone and have and actually seen seen a legitimate healing out of that?
Yeah.
Any any really cool stories?
Do you remember the boy that got the brain injury from football like last year in parachute? And he was in a coma for a long time. And with the high school with his grandmother. And she asked for prayer and we all prayed and he is now going to college.
That's awesome.
Love it. That's all. That's so great.
Yeah, that is that is awesome. That's awesome.
He's doing well.
So good.
Had another one. Where when I was dispatching one night, there was a baby that had R S V. And they said it was unresponsive but wasn't breathing. Luckily, he was close enough to the hospital. But immediately I started praying and I don't know if anybody else was out there doing the same thing. But they got the baby to where it was responding and was breathing by the time they got it to the hospital.
That's awesome.
Yes. Yeah, don't 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 discount that. Prayer.
Not at all.
I got two stories that stick out. Um, one was real simple. I was uh. The like kids church pastor at the time, so green team, this is a few years ago and uh. One of the volunteers came in with a torn um. Uh, M C L, I believe it was, and. So we're just like, hey, let's just lay hands on it and pray and see what happens, you know, like um, we'll just. Never hurts to go for it, hurts to ask, that's for sure. And so we were praying um. And as we were praying, you know, we're just. Just going after it like um full till asking God for miracle right then and there. And I felt the ligament on like under my hand like pop. And he was healed like right there restored. And that was insane. Um, the other one that, I mean, he was just doing. Just cartwheels and stuff. I'm like, slow down, brother.
Don't need to blow that back out.
Yeah, right. Is there the other one or something? Then uh. The other one that really sticks out, we had a um. A month old preemie come to the church um and was on the liver organ donor list. Um, just the tiniest little kid. And uh, I mean, it was just wasn't looking good. Parents came in, didn't know what else to do, everything, you know, was just um. They said, no, no other options. They're on their way to the children's hospital to have like another test or operation. And so a few of us as staff prayed over him. And it was like a week later, they're like, doesn't need a new liver at all. Liver's fully functional and just fine. And it was like a hundred percent restored and the kid, you know, bu- by now is probably in. Uh, first grade kindergarten, something like that. And uh, just having the best time is super cool, so. After party, I'll tell you a really embarrassing healing thing uh that won't I won't do on the recording, but if anybody wants to stick around here, funny story. I got you.
Well, we've uh we've all heard, we've all heard stories about about. Some of the some of the false faith healers, you know, that that have been out and. Of course, you know, going back to giving God a bad rap, right? The probably the the most crazy cra- the craziest one that I can think of. Well, you probably remember a couple of years, few years ago when we had the the first revival. Um, series um starting off the new year. I don't think that was in like twenty eighteen, maybe eighteen or nineteen. I don't know. Anyway, um, there was. One of those, one of those nights, um. We had a a the prayer session down front and there was a, there was a young woman that um. She was. She was sitting there and we're like, well, what can you, what do what do you need prayer for? And she's like, well, she's like. I've had this problem with my with my leg forever, blah, 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 blah. And I need, I'm supposed to be wearing these orthopedic shoes. Like the ones two inches taller than the other and this and that. And she was like, I hate it because, I mean, she was young, she was like nineteen or twenty years old. And. We like sat her down on the sat her down on the floor in front of the stage and there was a group of. In front of the stage and there was a group of us gathered around her and like she like had her, she was like sitting with her back to the stage. When her feet sticking straight outside by side and the one was obviously like two inches shorter than the other. And nobody touching her hmm like. I I think there might have been one person with a hand on her shoulder. But just like we just kind of circled up and held hands around her, like five of us and prayed over and we legit watched that leg. Come out and match the other one. It was crazy.
I have a cool one too. Uh, I was praying for this guy in Mexico uh online. He had some kind of like leprosy, like it looked really bad on his skin, like bleeding and stuff. And he. He told me to pray for him, so I told my family, I told the. Uh, Bible study group too that I was going to to pray for him. And like two weeks later, he sent me pictures and his. His leprosy, whatever he had, his like, his skin, his his uh rash or whatever. It just fell off. He even sent me pictures of his skin like on the floor and stuff. And his skin looked totally like really, really. Like really, like nothing was there ever. So we were like, whoa, we were really amazed. It's really, God works so wonderful. He's he's good.
Yeah, yeah, for sure, for sure. For sure. Um. So. Um. So I I there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of times, you know, that we get, we get kind of wound up in in these feelings like. If we don't see those miraculous healings. That maybe something, maybe God's actually not healing, right? Um, and so. Like. In the, in those instances, what, what is your perception of someone being healed?
I think everything has to do with God's timing and will and everything, because if it's his will and his plan to heal someone. Because it it will happen, but if it's not, then you know, it's, he has a different plan for each person. So a lot of people think that, you know, God, I believe he hears all our prayers, but it's not. If it doesn't go with God's perfect plan that he has for each one of us, then it's not gonna happen. It'll happen under and his perfect timing and on the perfect day.
Okay. Um. So what are the? So what uh? What are the, what are the three? Can God heal, can God heal someone through other means other than someone's prayer? I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say yes. And that.
Thinking of the um touching the cloth, you know, those miracles of Jesus.
Well, and even.
Yeah.
Yeah, and even even going farther on from there um. In the, in the book of Acts, I believe it was, I don't remember if it was Paul or Peter. But people would be healed even when his shadow passed across them. Or they would touch his, touch his garments.
But I think that prayer or touching the garment had to one factor. As the key. In my opinion, the the faith. Whether it's, whether it's. Express through that prayer. Or. Express through. Fighting through the crowd to touch his, his cloth of his garment. You know, that faith was there, the centurion soldier for his kid, like all, like those stories, you know, like those are, I think that faith. That faith is that part.
So one that just really jumped out at me. As you were saying that, Nate. The, one of the gospels makes an account of that when. Jesus. Died on the cross, that there were actually people that came out of their graves. What a, what a wild thing that would be, right? To, you know, and and what what would that, what would that even look like? Like seriously, like. You, you look at the burial practices of the time and. You know, they're wrapped up like mummies with, you know. You know, for, for exa- for example, um. Draw a blank on his name, that actually, what's that?
Lazarus?
Lazarus.
Well, yeah, Lazarus too, but um, who was the guy that um? That actually went to the, went to pilot and asked for Jesus's body so he could bury him.
Joseph.
Joseph.
Yeah, Joseph, yeah, Joseph Arimathea. You know, they, they say that he, that he had, he had over a hundred pounds of spices. And, you know, buried burial stuff to wrap in the cloth with Jesus's body. So here's this person with all this cloth wrapped around him and a and a hundred pounds of spices and who knows what all else to preserve the body. And uh, you know, the, you get the, get the, the mummy thing going on when they're coming out. Um. How, how wild would that be to to see and and? I mean, how many people did that transform? Seeing that happen when Jesus died, they were like, oh, my gosh. You know, we had, we have the account of the, of the soldier saying truly this was this only God. You know, so.
I have a little part of my study Bible that might answer that question that you read from the message as well about can heal otherwise? If you don't mind, I'll read it a little. It says, God heals, faith doesn't. And all prayers are subject to God's will. But our prayers are part of God's healing process, part of it says. That is why God often waits for our prayers of faith before intervening to heal a person. So with reading that, it does sound like, you know, it's his choice. But to do it other than prayers, but prayers, he waits for the prayers from the faithful before he intervenes. But that was interesting. I had marked that during my reading.
Yeah. So, yeah, that and that's a good one. And and you reading that just reminded, just made me think of another way besides. Physical healing. That God heals. So, you know, we, we tend, we tend to think about healing from sickness or disease or injury or things like that. And. We typically think of physical restoration. Um, but. We also, we, we so often don't think about, and I don't know why I didn't think about it till just now. But look at the spiritual warfare realm. When, when God delivers someone from. Being possessed or oppressed by a demonic force. That's a, that's a, that's a very powerful form of healing right there. Um. The, the one that really kid jumped into my mind was the, was the little boy that um. His dad came and said, you know, he's, he's got epilepsy and the, or, you know. It it's translated now as being epilepsy, but you know, the demon, the demon often through throws him into the water, the fire, trying to kill him or whatever, you know. He rolls around on the ground foaming at the mouth and stuff. And so that's a. That was, that was a profound, profound healing for that family. Um, what are the, what are the other ways? Okay, so what are the, there's three primary ways that that God heals. Physical things. Do we know what those are? Okay. So. One way is just a straight up miraculous healing, right? Where just all of a sudden. Whatever the problem was, is just gone. The li- like Will's example of the, of the, of the M C L just popped and it's fixed. Um. Now that, that's a, that's a miraculous healer, that's a miraculous healing. Um. The second way is. He may just take that person home to heaven. If it, you know, some kind of a turn of terminal illness. You know, he could either, he could either just take it away and it'd be gone. Or he could. Take them to heaven. Well, they're still healed. That's the ultimate healing. It's, it's rough for us to think about it that way. Because. That person is somebody that's loved and cared for.
That thought's been on my mind a lot, because after I get done with my cancer, I have to go through open heart surgery. You know, a lot of people have asked me, you know, oh, God, you'll be all right, you'll be all right. And I'm like, how do you know? It may be all right, but it may not be here.
Right.
So it is hard. I mean, somebody that's going through that right now like me. Um, I'm not quite there yet, but that's gonna hit me pretty hard pretty soon.
Yeah.
Do you think that another one would be um like gradual healing? You know, gradual healing is is still, is still um healing, you know, over time.
Yep. Yep, he, healy, healing over time or through. Intervention, intervention of whatever medical care there is.
Yeah, and sometimes I think like the real blessing of healing isn't actually even the result. Sometimes it's the process.
Yeah. Yeah, what, what, what does that process do for you?
Yeah. I mean, I think um. I think it really can, can sh- shape your, your thinking and your, your beliefs and um. And even your relationships with people, you know, being a testament. Of staying faith and a testament to others to to view and witness.
Hundred percent.
Yeah, I was thinking of pers- perspective shift. For both yourself. And also. The way that that will. Affect others, you know, um. That process of that. Can, can make a big difference in your. In the way you see the world, also the um. Kingdom mindset shift a lot of times.
Does it, does it affect anybody uh besides just who sees it happen right then?
Like long term, do you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Why is that?
It's powerful. Somebody's story, it's um. Their testimony. And the, and the power behind it.
Exactly. Exactly, and, and. You know, you. When you have something like that, whether it be. A restoration of your physical body, a restoration of your. Marriage or whatever, it's, it becomes a part of your story. And that gives you opportunity to. Share that story with others and help other people process through. That are going through a similar situation.
Right, meet them where they're at. Help them along, yeah, definitely.
Yeah, hundred percent. Um.
I was um singing the song the other day. And part of the lyrics said, if it's not good, then he's not done. And. It reminded me of this conversation because. Like you said, um, the second run is the ultimate feeling. And it was something that I've been working on um for like a year. Um, we lost a family member and I uh just. Have like all these questions and um, like last I was saying, it can either really build your faith or really shake you to the core and. I decided that it wasn't gonna change. What I thought about Jesus and that um, just because it didn't happen my way and in my timing, I. Um. Like God is still good and if it's not good, then he's not done.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. Um. So, like when. When you, when you have had. Moments where you've, where you've prayed for someone for healing and you don't feel like there's anything coming out of it. Like you, you feel like it's stuck and there's not anything happening or whatever. Um. Have you ever thought about eh, why that is? Like.
Yeah. I heard something recently about a reason that could be why. Is like if you're sinning and you're doing something sinful, it's making you sick or so on. God can't heal you while you're sinning. Uh, in doing the practice of of sinning, so the person has to not be doing that in order to be healed. Whatever they're doing if they're sinning.
I think there's, there's, there's a, there's potential for that, sure. Um. You know, if, if, if you're living in open unrepentant sin and you know better, I could see, I could see there being a potential for that.
Like smoking or things like that, you know, they're hurting you if that's what, you know, your illness is. You know, while you continue to do it.
Sure, sure. But on the, on the, on the flip side of that too, how many people did Jesus heal? That. Were living in sinful lifestyles.
Hmm.
He always told them now go and sin no more.
Right.
Yeah, I think it can be, it can definitely be a barrier, but it doesn't mean it is, if it doesn't happen.
Right, right, yeah. Right.
I look at it as we are all individuals. And God has a plan for each and every one of us. And if it's God's will to heal us, he will. If it's not his will, he won't.
Hmm.
Now, the way I see it too, we might not understand when we're, when we're asking for something is, it might not be good for us. But you know, we just wanted like a little baby, you know, that wants something. And at that time, we don't see that it's not good. Then later on, we'll realize. Oh, you know, if he would answer our prayer that, that time when we were asking for it, it would have been good because, you know, something else would have happened. So we always have to see like. You know, if, if he's not answering our prayers right there, then, you know, we always have to be good with whatever God. Wants, so he's still, he, I believe he, he is hearing us and stuff, but. He's just not answering us our prayers for our own good, which we don't know. Yeah, until later on, we realized why he didn't, didn't answer that prayer. That's happened to me, that's why I. I know. You know.
Yeah, I think that could be true. That faith and the sovereignty of God, that side of that, you know, is that. Like you were saying, we talked about that this morning, Jason and Dean about the. About them asking to, to see to, to be seated at the right and left hand of him in heaven and. He's like, you don't, you don't even know what you're asking, you know? Um, so that's, that's part of it too. That's what I was thinking of.
Yeah, that, that kind of goes by, that kind of goes back to the, it may not be in his time right then, you know? Um. There's also, there's also a little bit of an element of, of where, shoot now, I'm in the wrong place. Um. So here in verse fourteen. Are any of you sick? You should call for the elders of the church to come and pray over you, anointing you with oil in the name of the Lord. Well. Are you, are you flying solo when you're going praying for somebody for healing? Or are you? Going together in a group of people? And we can look at uh Ecclesiastes four. If somebody wants, if somebody wants to pull that, I've got, I've got it here, but. Um, two are better than one because they have a good reward to their toil. If they fall, one will lift up his fellow, but woe to him who is alone when he falls and has not another to lift him up. If two lie together, they keep warm, but how can one keep warm alone? And though a man might prevail against one who is alone, two will withstand him. Yet a three-fold cord is not quickly broken. So. There, there's, there's power in numbers, right?
I think it's a hard, it's a hard area. I think that it gets misused. You're told, you know, maybe you don't have enough faith. Or. A lot of different things can come into play. And. Got what's God's will. Hard to know, but the way that James words it, it's pretty cut and dried, but I haven't always seen it cut and dried. I lost a couple of my good young friends in the church. Over the last few years and people were praying like crazy. And they both had cancer, they both had children, you know, and it was a really difficult. And you think we all came together, we all prayed for those sisters in Christ. They were taken on to heaven, which for them was wonderful. For the rest of us, wasn't so great.
Yeah, for sure. For sure.
I think when it comes to, oh, sorry.
No, you're, you're fine, Will, go ahead. I was, I was processing as I was starting to talk.
I think it, it's like whenever it comes to healing, there's a couple of things that like really. Olivier a lot of the pressure off of it for me. And I think that like early on, I definitely had some experiences, it was just like. You know, like the knee and other things too, where I'd pray and when I didn't see it, I'm like, what the heck? Like I've seen it happen and so now I'm like, the question comes into my mind. God can, because I've seen him do it. But now he's not willing. And that was like a big stumbling block for me of just like, why isn't he willing? And I mean, why isn't a question that very many Bible characters ever got an answer of, of God anyway? It's pretty pointless to try and ask God why. But for me on the, on the whole idea of healing. Is that, just like Jason said, with the three different kinds of healing, whether it's a miracle, it's through medicine. You know, or you go and see him face to face. Like what person, no matter what, then? Will be healed. Someone who's saved, right? Like no matter what, they're healed. The, the how and the when. We, we don't know. That's for sure. But like, so that bringing it back to the faith filled prayer. The ultimate faith filled prayer salvation. I think that's why you see when the paralytic is lowered through the roof to Jesus' feet, first thing Jesus says is your sins are forgiven. He gives him salvation first instead of. Because healing happens then, like no matter what, does that make sense? And so like that took all the pressure off of me to where it's not my words or my prayer that like will dictate healing. It's God's love for that person, right? And so whether I see it happen in the moment or not. They're healed. Isaiah fifty-three, like by his stripes we are healed, so healing. And I love that Jason, how you brought up the, the, the people that rose from the dead at. The moment, you know, in the cross and everything like that, when Jesus died, like death is the enemy's realm. Life is the, is God's, it's like healing will come hundred percent if you put your faith in Jesus. So like, if we walk around going like this person's already healed. And like we see them that way. I don't know, it just alleviates all that pressure. Of course, we're still going to ask for the big ask, we want pain to go away, we want discomfort to go away. But knowing that like they're healed no matter what. Like they're gonna see him face to face, just, it really helped me anyway, like handle the moments that I've prayed for people that have died. That. Didn't get healed in that moment. I hope that maybe, hopefully I articulated that enough to maybe alleviate that for you guys too, but that's really helped me, is just that idea. They're healed.
For sure, for sure, and that, that almost kind of ties back a little bit to, to even like evangelism when someone, when someone rejects the. The offer of the truth of the gospel. You know, it's so easy to internalize that rejection as they're rejecting, they're rejecting me. Well, they're not rejecting me, they're rejecting Christ. And so that, you know, it's, it's along that same line of, of, that's not our burden to carry. It's, we can, we can leave that, we can leave that with Jesus. Because like Nate said, he's, he's the one that's sovereign, not us. So yeah, so. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, along that same, same passage in Ecclesiastes four, nine through twelve. In Matthew eighteen twenty, for where two or three are gathered in my name, I'm among them. You know, it's, it's more of that, just. Partnering up with, partnering up in faith. With, with others. And I, I don't know, I mean, like, like you said, Will, I mean, it's, it's kind of hard to, to. It, it, it's still, it's still hard as people and to not internalize, well. Well, I, I went with, there was, there was five of us went together and prayed for this guy and he still did, he still didn't get, get healed the way that we wanted him. You know, the way, the way that we wanted him to. Well, again, we're still putting our own will and our own spin on it. So. Yeah.
Yeah, it's like us forcing our idea of what healing looks like. Over gods.
Yeah. Yeah.
Brings me of when the disciples were like, we tried to cast the demon out of him, but it wouldn't work. You know?
And why, and. Well, yeah, you.
That's the paralytic boy, actually, it's the same one.
Yeah, the, this kind only comes out by prayer and fasting.
She keep praying.
And pray. And how much, how much do we, do we not pray and fast like we should? Guilty.
Me too.
So. Question four out of the little study guide. How do we restore someone into today's church culture? That's kind of my paraphrase of the question, I don't remember exactly what the question was, but that's the gist of it. And correct me if I'm wrong in, in your, your. Your questioning there, Will, was like someone who has. Someone who has. Is that, is that someone who's fallen from grace, kind of like a. The way I took that was like someone, say, say a pastor or whatever has. Fallen into a, a sin pattern or whatever.
I think it could be that or something small too. I think you could, I meant, I meant to be pretty generic, so. That's an instance, how do you restore someone that maybe it's, it's more of like a, a fence on your part too, does that make sense? Like where you need to like kind of restore that person within, within something, so it could be both.
Yeah. Okay.
I have an answer real quick, if you want to hear what I wrote.
Sure.
I wrote by, by praying and acting in love, we can meet the person where they are and bring them back to God and his forgiveness.
Yeah, I, I, I think that, I think that's good, yeah. You know, prayer, counseling, anything along that lines. Matthew eighteen fifteen through eighteen. Talks about, talks about. Restoration of someone who's sin against you, you know? They go, you go talk to them one on one, if they reject that, you get somebody else and go talk to them. Again, if they still reject that, well then, then you get the, then you get the pastors involved if the, then if they reject you, you kick them out. You, you kick them to the curb. Which is, is hard, it's rough. But. Sometimes that's what we have to do. And the other passage that jumped out to me and that one too was, was Ezekiel thirty-three, six through nine, where it talks, where it talks about being a watchman. And. If, if you warn someone and they reject that warning. Then. The problem is on them. But if you, if you see the problem and you don't call out the problem. And it causes them to fall deeper or come under attack or whatever, then that comes back on you because you saw the problem and didn't, didn't bring it to light. Which that ties back into last week too, with the, with the judgment side of things as well. So. We are kind of getting run down on time, does anybody else have anything else that, that jumped out at them? That we can hit real quick this week?
Well, I think one of the, the greatest keys out there to reflecting like the fruit of the spirit, you know, is, is just doing everything with joy. It's, it's hard in today's time, you know, sickness and family and everything going on in the world, it just. It, it's hard to always remain joyful at times, but I, I think if we always are exhibiting traits such as. You know, love and joy and peace that eventually, you know, people are going to come up to you and they're going to start asking. Why are you so happy? You know, or, or why you have all this troubles in your life and why are you, why are you always so positive? And that I think just being that type of person. Can eventually kind of change the culture and, and, and people today.
Yeah. Ephesians six, seven. Work with enthusiasm as though you were working for the Lord rather than for people. Yeah, that's a, that's a good one, Dean. And you know, just like, just like we talked about this morning and in our men's group, you know, that, that being, being salt and light. You know, if you, if you, if, if you're, if you're, if you're not salty and not the bad kind of salty where you're grumpy. You know, if you're not, if you're, if you're not salty, if you, if you're not salty, you're not bringing flavor to. Flavor, a flavor to the world and you're not, you're also not being, bringing light to the world. And. Going, going right back to the, you know. In, in a dark place, the tiniest little flicker of candlelight can be seen for miles. So it doesn't, you know, that, and that's what we're called to be, we're called to be salt and light. So. Yeah. Well, I think that is kind of where we have to cut it off due to time and been, been a great study.
It really has. It's been fun.
Been a great study these last, these last five weeks and hopefully we get another one going soon and. Lots of people.
Hopefully looking back through James, we can see that. You know, kind of that original goal of just like also looking at scripture that doesn't have to be in. A certain format as far as like have to read it by chapter or whatever, like there's teachings that cross the chapters, cross the verses and. Stringing themes together across an entire, you know, entire book, we looked at twelve teachings here. But there are so many other little options that we took every week that were just so good, you know? And so hopefully this just continues to encourage and, you know, for those of us live and those of us, those of you that are listening later. Like seeing the new angles like we talked about earlier. Only happens when you gather together and talk about it, you know? And, and, and just vet out some of this stuff, like how does healing, you know? Impact my personal like. Just convictions too, you know, like that's, that's stuff that you can't. Just on your own be able to like, you know, get to without, you know, being able to hear Jesus speak through other people as well. And so hopefully, yeah, this is something that everybody enjoyed. Yeah, I think that, and I'll turn it over to you, Jason, in prayer for, in just a sec, but. Looking forward to do it, like we want to continue to have online resources for sure. As we're joined, you know, in rifle in Texas and New Hampshire right now and among other places like. And if you're listening, you know, later wherever you're from, but we want to continue to have those. If you are, if you happen to be in person, we are doing some in-person classes midweek starting in January. And so we're going to do Financial Peace University, which is awesome for those of you that. Want to be able to get debt free and kind of see a godly way to handle finances and stuff, that's really good. We also have an in-person class that's going to be divorce care starting in January. If the divorce has touched your life in that way, it's a great group to get into. And then I'll be teaching a class on. What do we name it? We named it today, I couldn't, I'm so bad with coming up with names for stuff, it's like I ask everybody on staff to help me. But, because there's always a pun and they're like, that's not funny, Will. And I'm like, okay, I won't go there, but we're just calling it Christian life hacks and basically I'm doing like a. It's just like life skills that. Are straight out of scripture and like how to walk out Christianity in the modern culture in the modern day. So I'm doing that midweek as well, it's going to be on Wednesdays. And then we're going to have another online. I try to always have like an online something to be able to reach across everything. But if, we'll see if we can get the midweek one recorded anyway and, and maybe an online resource too, but. Either way, there's new stuff popping up and so keep your eyes out for that stuff. As we're going to continue to just try and grow closer to Jesus and one another and look more like him at the end of the day, that's probably the, the biggest goal, right? Is to just be more like Jesus in any, every way we can, so. There's a lot more stuff coming up, but I really enjoy this study, you guys like opened my mind about James again. I was always like, ah, it's just all these commandments. But I, I enjoyed it so much, I think I can probably say that it's one of my more favorite books now. So thank you guys. Big shout out to the leaders, thank you Cindy, Claudette, Nate, Jason. Really, I, I had a great time, I love these studies, so. You guys rock, thank you so much, so Jason, I'll turn it over to you for prayer and then if anybody wants to hear an awkward story after.
I, I just wanted to add that one of the, one of my favorite things about the way that. You had this broken up by the weeks this time, Will, was that you kind of broke it up in ways that ignored the. Story breaks that are built into so many bibles these anymore. And it just, just, it, it worked as a good reminder for me at least that. When, when all this was written. The chapters, the verse, those story breaks weren't in there, it was one continuous letter. And so it all flows together and, and we get, we get in such a rut of, of. Breaking it into those sections that are already pre-broken for us and. And I think we can miss a lot when we do that. So I. Thank you for doing that, I think it was great.
Awesome, thank you, encouraging.
Anyway. Yeah, well, let's, we'll just close, close in prayer here and. Yeah. Heavenly Father, God, we thank you, we thank you for this group of people that have been able to assemble together. And I thank you for anyone who watches this online in the future. Whether that's on YouTube or on the, on the Church Center app or the church website. That you would just, God, you say that your word never goes out and returns void. And we trust you for that, that you would just. Continue to do the work that you want to do through this. And I just pray for it to minister to people going forward in the future. I ask for your favor and blessings over every person who sees it, who has participated. And that you would just, just continue to bless, bless each and every person, in Jesus' name I pray, amen.